Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
David Burris. J.R. Huddleston.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Linda Varvell.
Here.
Melanie Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
You should join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to mention Dave Burris. Everyone's probably noticed that he hasn't been with us for a couple of weeks. He's been dealing with a medical issue that looks like he's getting a handle on. The doctor has advised him to stay as immobile as he can. He says he's doing the best he can to be a compliant patient. The older we get, that's difficult sometimes, but he's optimistic that he'll be able to join us for our budget meetings next week. So if you want to reach out to him and wish him the best, I'm confident he would appreciate that. But he wanted everyone to know that he's disappointed he hasn't been able to be with us for a while, but he's working real hard to get back with it. So we look forward to having him join us in our budget meetings next week. Conflict of interest, as always. Counsel, if you have anything that you're uncomfortable voting on, please let the counsel know ahead of time. And Melanie, you had raised the question about a bill from Wilson Electric on both the bills in between and the current claims.
Yes.
And as we talked about, you're certainly free to talk about any other bills on the agenda or on the claims that you want to. If there's any that you'd like more information or you would like to have an uphold, you're certainly free to do that. But when it actually comes to voting on the bills in between and the current claims, you need to abstain from those.
Thank you.
You may. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda. We have another number of different locations here. Under the current claims, we need to add $2,000 to Luxury Express LLC for the delivery of the new police department vehicle. So that $2,000 would take the current claims cost from $645,259.64 to $647,259.64. Then we also have a couple of changes in our personnel actions. Personnel action G, the effective date for Chief Wenscott will be August 12, 2022 rather than July 29, 2022. And then we are removing Personnel Action Item H. And the final amended item is under Executive Session. And we're adding, I'm asking you to add an executive session under South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-21, Performance of Public Officials.
I'd like to make, okay, sorry.
You're good with what we talked about?
I am. You ready?
You got it?
I got it.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, adding $2,000 to Claims, Item B, Current Claims, to Luxury Express LLC PD Delivery Vehicle, bringing that total to $647,259.64. And Personnel, changing Item G, Last Effective Date, 7/29/22 for Jen Wenscott to August 12, '22. And removing Item H, adding an executive session at SDCL 1-25-2, parenthesis, One, Performance of Public Officers. Officials, sorry.
Second. Larry, you second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion to approve the minutes from the July 5 council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July 5 council meeting.
Second. Discussion?
Second was, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between.
Make a motion to approve the bills in between of $219,844.98.
Second. Discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
With the vandalism, current payments, page two or page 10, if you have a computer.
We're on the bills in between.
Yeah, we're on the bills in between, Deborah.
Okay, sorry.
It's fine.
Never mind, next.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Motion for Deborah's current claims.
Make a motion to approve current claims for $647,259.64.
Second. Discussion?
I have a couple of questions. On page two or 10, if you have a computer, there's payments for a bunch of vandalisms that occurred 4th of July weekend. Are those going to be submitted to insurance companies? Do we get coverage through for that?
I have not received any loss reports from anyone regarding vandalism on the 4th of July.
Staff is still putting together numbers to get to her so we can look at and get those in.
You're the first I heard of that.
Okay. Because there was a lot of it. And shame on those people who cannot appreciate the park system that we've tried to keep up for everybody and then to have toilets blown up and graffiti in every single bathroom throughout town, not one but two but three nights. That's just appalling.
Is this the action mechanical? Just to be clear, I'm looking at the same thing you are for $3,057.73?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm told they caught one of the kids that did it.
Not for the graffiti, though. The blown up toilet got caught, but not the graffiti, which is...
Typically, then, that would be assigned as a restitution case and not sent to the insurer.
Okay, but we haven't caught all the graffiti. So then there was extensive amounts of it.
And we usually don't catch the graffiti players, but in this case, we're putting together our labor hours, what it took us to repair it.
Okay.
Mayor, Deborah, did you have anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
On page three, 1,000 vehicle impounding forms, is this indicative of how many of the vehicles that are going to be cleaned up from town or what is that about?
My understanding on that was PD needed to order them by a box or a set, and they do need to start doing that once we get the approval on these vehicles, so they're going to start taking it.
I don't see that claim on page three. Sorry.
See, maybe I didn't put that down. That, actually, that was the overlooked flooring. Where would that have been? There's 1,000, it's on page two also, down a little further. Clark printing.
They have to buy them in a certain number.
Yeah, they come in sets of 1,000.
It's not indicative of the number that they're going to issue.
So I was just kind of wondering if that was a clue that we were going to be going after these abandoned vehicles. Is that a good sign that we're doing that?
I mean, it's not a clue, it's definite.
Okay.
It's definite.
So I'd just like people to know, we've got 1,000 vehicle impound forms coming.
Let's be clear, we don't have 1,000 vehicles waiting to be impounded.
I realize that.
If we have 1,000 vehicles, the theater will be full.
Right, I'm sure. Okay, and everyone who has that issue has received notices, so. And then page three, the overlooked flooring covering, 50% under diamond concrete.
Yes.
Coating, what's that for?
That's a budgeted improvement at Evans Plunge, and they have to have 50% down before they get started.
Okay.
And Linda, if you have anything to add about that, you've had updates in EPA.
Yeah, I have updates in my minutes.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right. Larry?
I was just, in reference to what she's saying, I know that there is some scuttlebutt talk about they did find a vehicle, but I don't know if that was under personnel, if it could be talked about as of yet with the police department.
Under personnel, talked about.
Yeah, they...
Larry, excuse me, I'm sorry, we have the...
We can't.
We can't hear you very well.
It was my understanding that the police department did identify a vehicle from Edgemont that had an out of state tag, and they were able to identify, maybe what you're talking about, Craig, somebody that did do some tags in town on the graffiti and blowing up the toilet. But I didn't know if that was talked about as of yet.
No. Captain Shively.
I may be talking out of pocket, sir, I apologize.
The vehicle that was traced to Edgemont was the vehicle that contained the individual who blew up the toilet.
Okay.
So, yep.
Thank you, sir.
But he wasn't involved in any of the graffiti?
We could not ascertain that information.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Captain Shively. Maybe just grab a seat up front in case they want to ask any questions about the vehicle.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
One question on page six. Under, there's a, for temperature technology, $1,109.23. That's coded as sewer fund, and that looks like if it's Hot Brook Pumping Station, that's probably water fund, and I think I got an email from Misty that that's equipment repairs and not professional services.
Correct, from the water fund and not the wastewater fund. Tracy had submitted the claim voucher with this information, and after we questioned him after your comment, he said, oh yeah, that's water. And then we said, well, it's not professional services, it's equipment repair, right? He agreed, so we did change that.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? Well, while Bill took us to page six, the last couple of claims, current claims that have been approved, I believe last one we were at three quarters of a million dollars. This one, we're at $647,000. And I just want to point out, as the council has seen when they're going through them, but for the public's benefit, that those two huge payments are actually work that's related to our suspended sidewalk. So it was, last one, I believe, was maybe $275,000 that we paid them, and this one's $570,000. So that's for the micro pile work. That's why we're seeing those high costs, is we're beginning to see some costs related to the construction of the suspended sidewalk. And counsel, I gave you each a drawing, a diagram here from Luxury Express that speaks to the added amount that we added to the current claims. And I just wanted to give Captain Shively an opportunity to ask or answer any questions you may have. Essentially, the vehicle is going to be delivered at Maverick Junction tomorrow morning. And the captain will meet them out there to take delivery of the vehicle, do an inspection of it to make sure that we're okay with them taking it off the transport and taking ownership of it. Counsel, if you have any questions for it?
What kind of title does this have, seems as wrecked?
What was the question?
What kind of title does it have, seems as wrecked?
Yep, it's a rebuilt title, and the state that it's coming from, the state actually has to inspect the vehicle after that rebuild to say, yes, it is roadworthy to give that rebuilt title. We were in communication with our city mechanic over this vehicle. He came down in the office, we looked at it, we talked about it, we called the people, and the city mechanic was good with it, so with that, we...
And our insurer. We double checked with our insurer to make sure that we could insure the title, and they're okay with it, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Offhand, do you happen to know what the mileage of this vehicle is?
I was going to grab the vehicle file before I came down, but I was on a call, but if I recall right, it's around 40,000 miles. Do you remember?
I was thinking it was around 38 or something.
38.
So we're right in.
Oh.
On the paperwork, but it could have a little bit more, so somewhere around there sounds right.
Right, right.
Okay. And we'll be immediately taking it up to get it retrofitted with everything, or is, does it have anything on it?
It does not have anything on it. It is the police package, but it was not used as a patrol vehicle, so it's been used much lighter, which is a good thing. There was a charger in Rapid, that police unit that was in a, some sort of crash, incapacitated the car, but all the gear on it was still good. So Sun, Sun who? Sunwise?
Suntech.
Suntech. I dealt with Sunwise for years and years, I can't ever get Suntech. Suntech gave us a call and said that they had that available, and it's going to be at a reduced price, so that's a good deal, too.
Well, the stars are aligning for us, I believe.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, love.
Any other questions? Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it. All right. All in favor of approving the current claims?
Aye.
Opposed?
This is where you'd have seen verbally, I've missed that on the bills in between, sorry, but I'll note it on both.
The motion passes. Communications from the public.
Gerald Colligan, 1038 Evanston Avenue, member of the Main Street Arts and Crafts Festival Committee. We, as a committee, would like to thank you, the city, for support of the festival, 45th annual. We were pretty sure it was good, the vendors were excited. Thank the city and the committee for a successful event. We have no way to track how much tax money that they're kicking in, but according to the evaluation forms, they definitely were successful this year. But we'd like to thank the city for a nice looking park, nice green grass, and a fountain that was put together, it seemed like hours before the festival. We appreciate that, too, because that was focal point. We're going to be working with Parks and Rec and the city administrator when it comes to some park improvements, because for 45 years, we've had park improvement on our budget list. But just wondering, since you're working on budgets this year, just wondering if you've got it in your budget for a park stretcher? Because we had to turn down some vendors this year because we just didn't have enough room.
Or a park what, did you say?
Park what?
Is that a joke?
A park stretcher.
Park stretcher?
It's kind of a joke, to make the park a little bigger.
I'm like a corg stretcher?
Misty, take a pause, a park stretcher?
I don't think we have that budget in this year.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thanks, Gerald. Thank you, Gerald.
It was a great festival, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, takes us to our personnel actions, remembering that there was an amendment to Item G, the effective date will be August 12 on that one, and Item H was removed. Can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through G?
Make a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through G.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our resolution, Resolution 2022-18, a resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-18 to amend the citywide fee resolution to increase airport fuel price per gallon to $6.35 per gallon and establish a rate of $7.50 per gallon for bulk water cells at the airport.
Second.
Discussion?
Two items. First of all, I think that should be 7.50 per thousand.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
There you go.
Or? We can leave.
Or?
So...
I will make that amendment.
We need to amend the motion?
I will make that amendment, yes.
And it's on the resolution, per thousand.
And then...
Second that amendment.
Before, can we also, on the first whereas, it talks about the Airport Advisory Board, and since we are not a board, could we change that to Airport Advisory Committee?
Yes, you can.
We remind that group, often they are not a board, so... That's all I have on that.
Anyone else?
Is that water bill for the seat plane?
No, it's for crop dusters.
It would be set for anyone that needed to purchase water.
Whoever buys water in the city.
I'll talk about it in my airport report, but the way the contract with Fall River Water Users is written, there is a fire protection exemption, so the water that is used for the seat plane is not metered water, and so we...
They actually have their own meter, and as long as they get water from that meter, it's tracked to them.
So we don't have to pay for fire protection water.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Do they use water?
Anyone else?
Per gallon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On a new business, Item A, possible motion discussion to increase the approved hours for Recreation Director.
I make a motion for discussion to increase the approved hours for Recreation Director by 250, 250 hours to 1,040, effective for this calendar year 2022. And going forward, this recommendation is being made in order to continue current program requirements and schedules, additional $4,535 to be funded by future supplemental appropriation using unassigned fund balance.
Second.
Discussion? Jeff, I believe this one.
Yeah, this is really to help us get through the rest of the season, and I have to be honest on this, I personally wasn't tracking the hours of the Recreation Director, and I was actually assigning her additional things to work on. So it's partially my fault not being accustomed to that limitation on her hours. But bottom line is, we're up against a ceiling of 790. I don't think we're going to need 250, I believe we can do it for less, but I won't have to ask twice. Right now, I've got her on a fairly strict schedule and reporting to me weekly, so we're going to try and keep this to 100, but again, I'm not, I don't want to come back and ask again, so we're doing our best to keep it down.
I know that our recreation program has vastly improved, increased, it's gotten a lot more year round. Initially, forever, it was just the summer and for kids, but now we're expanding to the adult population, which there's a lot of us, and people, we want good quality of life, so I see this expanding further in the future.
But let me, let me point out to Deb, there are some, the Recreation Director made a comment in the info sheet that were vastly, or whatever adjective she used, numbers were huge. In some cases, they have increased, some cases they have decreased, so it's not like the overall program has just exploded, but you're absolutely correct. There are new things I've asked her to try, she's got some more, bigger numbers in some things, some things she's had to cancel. So it's just, it's a juggling act, honestly, to get a feel, but you are right. I've asked her to drop the concept of summer rec, even though I realize that's what it is, and unfortunately, I haven't done up the budget to do that, so. I have tried to make a combination for that in the 2023 budget, but right now, I am against that ceiling, so. And I have to apologize for that because I was not tracking it as well.
One question for you, Jeff, and you've maybe answered it, but my question's specific, and maybe your answer didn't fall into my question, but are the increased costs because of greater than expected participation, or have we added programs that were not part of the planned activities that were included in the 2022 budget?
The answer is both. The answer is both. There are some things, some programs, you know, and I have the numbers, and for example, I forget what it was, you know, summer baseball, those numbers are higher. There are certain programs where they are higher, there are certain programs where they are the same or lower. Some programs we've canceled, I made them, you know, as an old recreation guy, my attitude is try it, see if it works, if it doesn't, we won't do it. And so unfortunately, that's not within the budget to do that. So she's tried some things that I sent her off to, you know, to approve her due, and they caused. The other thing, too, is I've asked her to expand cooperation with the VA, the schools, with SREC, with other organizations, and had sent her off on these missions to meet with them and go to their meetings and whatnot. So that's, that has cost them additional hours. I'm not sure if in the past, we picked up all those hours and accounted for them correctly, but regardless, that's where we are.
I know in the past, she did a lot of, she donated a lot of hours for the, for the program, so she deserves to be paid for what she does.
Well, and she has been directed, so that you know from me, not to do that. So she is not allowed to volunteer hours, and to my knowledge, she's not doing it now, but...
And Jeff, that's what I was going to ask, is how is this going to affect the charter that we've incorporated into the Parks and Rec?
The charter? I don't think it'll affect the charter at all. Everything, everything that we've done, the committee has been advised of, nothing unusual, but we can go back over it, look again, if you see something that I need to work on.
Okay, thank you.
So is this permanent or just for this year?
This is just for this fiscal year.
Okay.
And iterate what you're saying, I mean, there's a lot of programs that she's brought, and I mean, swimming, I was busy this summer, driving them back and forth, different programs, taking them to gymnastics, the kids love it. I can't tell you how many times they get on the bus, and they would just tell me what they've learned, they want to show me, but they can't stand up on the bus, so.
It's very hard to ask somebody to be creative and think of new things and then limit them to a certain number of hours, and that's on me, I, you know, I understand that, so.
And if I can, the motion discussion said that it is for this calendar year and going forward, so it's not just a...
There was an increase in the request of the budget for hours for that person as well.
Absolutely.
For 2023, but you'll still discuss.
Right, it doesn't line up with these numbers here. What I did is I actually looked at the numbers for 23, we'll discuss that when we get into budget, but this is only for this calendar year.
And I guess...
I have some historical data, for those of you that like to see it as well, I won't mention in detail, but, so you can do some comparisons for yourself.
And I guess just as a data point, as of the end of June, the recreation salary budget has consumed 84.29%.
Even higher now.
And the overall budget has consumed 66.9%.
Right. I mean, that 84, of course, is higher now, and I think that may include the instructors, that, it's a little complicated there, but essentially, what's counsel approved was her number of hours in addition to the budget, and that's what I'm going to be exceeding, and that's what I need to take care of. So that's what I'm asking for now, is the additional hours. I'm asking for 250, I believe I can do it for half that, and I'm going to watch it closely. Thanks, Jeff.
Any other questions? Talking about the hours, Jeff, I appreciate that you're going to watch them closer. You know, council added additional 100 hours two years ago, I believe, you know, to meet the expanding need. And when I talked with Kathy last week, because she's bumping up, you know, on the 790, need to have closer watch on when those hours are being used, those 790 for all year, all year, and we're not there yet. So I appreciate that you recognize that, and you're going to be watching that to make sure that the hours that she's approved for are for 12 months, not just part of the season. So thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion passes. New business, Item B, a possible motion discussion to recognize and record the name of the supplier for the purchase of 3,000 gallons of aviation gasoline.
Make a motion to recognize and record the name and the supplier of the purchase of 3,000 gallons of 100 low-lit aviation gasoline by the Hot Springs Municipal Airport as required by South Dakota Codified Law 5-18C-6. Purchase made with the Ascent Aviation Group, World Fuel. Other vendors not considered as World Fuel had remaining fuel in a tanker load and offered to sell at a discounted rate. Negotiated contract for the purchase of fuel at 5.65 per gallon compared to current rates of 6.04 per gallon.
Second.
Discussion.
I didn't get the second. Was it Deborah? Thank you.
The motion did a pretty good job of explaining what happened here. Bill, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, this is very opportunistic. We never try to buy a partial load of fuel on our own because it's more expensive. Here, we had the opportunity to buy a partial load, and again, at a discounted price. We had room in the tank to do it. So we're able to maintain a margin, especially by raising the price like we did tonight. It comes at a good time. Given most of my airport report, the form of the committee reports, we sold, I think, over 1,100 gallons in June. The Oshkosh fly-in is coming up towards the end of the summer, and so between the amount of air, general aviation air traffic and our good prices, it's good to go into that time of year with a wholesale price like this and a full tank. So I think we're very fortunate to have this opportunity.
All right. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, Item C, a possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement.
I make a motion to discuss and approve an automatic budget supplement of $6,701.58 to the additional sales tax fund for construction, admin, and observation engineering for Airport 10-unit T-hanger Construction Project. Reimbursement revenue received from AIP grant funding
Second. Discussion.
This says received. We already got that?
Yes, I don't have you supplement it till we receive the reimbursement. So after you approve a claim, I have to send an entire batch to the grantor. They have to process it and approve it, and then they send it back to us. And I don't have you approve these budget supplements till the money's actually received.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I didn't get the second. Again, I'm sorry. This is really loud back here.
It is loud. Bill did.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. What'd you say? This is really loud over here.
We have like an HVAC or something going on back here today.
It's running.
It's working overtime.
We're happy it's cool, though, so not complaining.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, Carl.
All in.
Oh, Bill.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Committee reports, administrative and finance. JR, Melanie?
Our next Admin Finance will be August 3rd at 1:00 p.m. at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Airport Advisory. Bill?
Airport Advisory met on Thursday, July 14th, 8:30 at the airport. Members present were Shane Miller, Mark Boxbaum, and Petra Wilson. Employees present were Rick Breitenbach, Jeff Temple, and Tracy Bastian. Elected officials were myself and the mayor. Guests were Chase Hollow from High Country Erectors and Gary Telkamp. There were no communications from the public. T-hanger update. The standard design height for the roof for what High Country Erectors is providing is 14 feet 6 inches. The original roof height was 15 feet 6. The key issue here is the ability to maintain a 12-foot door clearance. KLJ engineers is okay with the difference, and there's no structural issues associated with the lower roof height. And they are asking for our concurrence. The members discussed this, and there's no operational issues, and they recommended concurrence with the change. Chase with High Country Erectors informed the committee that KLJ has approved High Country Erectors to design a new foundation. The new foundation has more concrete involved, but will take less time to construct. So a change order will be presented to council if there is an increase or decrease in the cost to the city. It's expected that if there is a change in cost, it will be a decrease since the design is much less labor-intensive. Under new business, under June fuel sales, I was wrong before, we sold 1,302 gallons of fuel. Flight operations, we had approximately 118 flights, 20 of which were from the seat plane. We also had 27 balloons and 25 glider flights. We've talked about the recommended fuel price of 6.35 and the purchase of the fuel. We talked about, reviewed the hangar rental rates. A full review and recommendation will hopefully presented at the next Airport Advisory Committee meeting, and we're looking at a new category for wingstands greater than 50 feet in the city hangar. We're looking at that because anything greater than 50 feet essentially takes up two spots. We've already talked about water use fees. We've had our annual South Dakota Department of Transportation inspection. We received a letter, and there are no findings with a statement that the airport looks really great. The airport manager received a call from the South Dakota DOT regarding structures north of the airport. The buildings appear to be okay in height, but the builder of those needs to submit a report to the FAA so they can document that information on the FAA website. And the builder has been provided with the forms and links to those websites. We received two very good reports by visiting airport users from the AirNav and ForeFlight Airport Review websites. KLJ has made a drone flight over the airport and taken some pictures, and so we'll use that to update the, our airport photos on the FAA website. Our runway will be needing some maintenance in the next year or two. This will need to be funded through the annual AIP entitlement funds, and this may delay some of our planned projects, such as the AWOS III acquisition. Petra discussed the upcoming Balloon Festival. There'll be 30 balloons, two of which will be the specialty balloons. She's also been approached by four paragliders that have expressed interest in participating. And also, the seat plane operator has offered to make a demonstrative water drop after the balloons have taken off. So the paragliders and the seat plane demonstration are not finalized yet, but they're talking. The airport Facebook page is being updated, and one of the old pages is being deactivated. Meeting adjourned at 9:35, and our next meeting will be Thursday, August 4th, 8:30 a.m. at the airport.
Any questions for Bill?
Regarding the seat plane, I did get a call from Olivia either the same day or the day after, and it sounds like for insurance purposes and other reasons, the seat plane probably isn't going to happen, but they'll continue to have that discussion. There is some concern about dropping water on a runway or in the vicinity of people and balloons because Darth and Yoda are still going to be on the ground. There's some concerns there. Sounds like that one may not happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Custer, Fall River Regional Waste Management. Larry?
Callab, my notes ready for the next meeting.
All right. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
I don't have official notes. Our secretary was missing, but I'll work off of my packet here. We met July 6th at 5 o'clock here at the Mueller Center, and there were several citizens, businesspeople there who had requests for their business improvements. The first one was Wandering Bison. They're planning on their exterior walls of the renovation of the old central body shop, and they had some drawings, and so they're going forward with that, but they don't have an open time yet. It's been a much more extensive renovation than they initially thought it would be. So, but it will be a huge improvement on one of the main corners in town. Mr. Fap Sam from the China Buffet was there requesting ideas and assistance on how to go forward to rebuild their business, to integrate it into the historic district. And so he was giving information to help them move forward with that. And again, there aren't any specific times or dates, but they are in the planning stage at least. And then a Blue Taxidermy is now in the, what's that? The 1001 building? Odd Fellows? Odd Fellows Building. He's on the left side next to the lawyer's office, and he needed approval of some signage where the, and they are open. It's an art studio and taxidermy, and so they are actively open. And then Maria March wanted approval on her business down across from the City Cop Shop, the Tattoo Building. She's going to be expanding another business in that building, and she's replacing doors and windows improvements there and needed approval for that. So we're going to be seeing some real extensive changes going on there that I can't really, am not at liberty to say at this point. And then we also have a new business in the old, I think it was a 406 Hair Salon, or 409? 402. 402. 402, down at the bottom of the viaduct. They're now up at the top across from the high school, but there was, there's new signage request for, Black Hills Exteriors are moving an office here into town, and they needed approval to put signage up for that business, and we needed to make some changes in their design so it would fit the building more appropriately. So they are now in a full-time presence here in town as well, so that's a big plus. And then updates on some of our sandstones. We have Sarah Bechtum, who's been just a little whirlwind activist on getting a window dressing project for these empty buildings, and it has evolved into, and expanded into some preservation going on, so big kudos to her and the whole project. On the Bodega Building, the cracked glass has been replaced on the lower level, and they're going to be working on getting upper-level glasses repaired. Gravel base has filled the foundation area and stabilized that, which is a big plus going forward. And then they secured the back wall, which it's not a permanent fix, but it has secured the building now where it cannot be entered. And the front of the building has been repainted. There are new awnings going up. She had the high school shop supposed to make some shadow boxes, but the shop teacher has resigned, and they've been working on going to rebuild that building or tear it down, and so that's kind of gotten backtracked, and some of the material went missing, so she's working on that. And I think that's the majority of the Bodega Building. On the Petty Building, he's been having garage sales, and I guess now he's going to be getting an auctioneer to try to clear up a lot of stuff that's in there. The front has been power washed, and they've picked a brown paint for the front. Second windows are being planned for new glass and curtains to go into that. So that is also ongoing. And 243 North River Street, which is in between City Hall and the theater, that owner was actually in town from Arizona, and she was able to work a relationship with him, and he's agreed that she can do some things like repaint the pink door and some green window frames, okay to be painted, and upper windows. She's planning, there's some reinforced chicken wire. Some of those windows on the non-weather side of the building, he wants to remain with the chicken wire just so it has some ventilation, so it keeps it dry. But the front windows along the street, she's working on getting an artist to do a split mural of like a sunset or something and split it between all those upper windows, and they'll have to be attached from the outside because he doesn't want anyone inside the building. And she did get a $1,000 grant from First Interstate Bank to help her do this stuff. She's also working with Don Johnson at the Pioneer Museum, collaborating with them on creating a timeline of the history to be displayed in some of the windows. And then she's hoping to have a lot of this done before the Balloon Festival. And we adjourned at 7:41. Our next meeting is August 3rd, Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah?
Yeah, I got one. And it's just my curiosity, I'm playing dumb here. If this is a historic sandstone district, why is painting allowed on these buildings?
It's not on the building. It's just to cover the windows of an abandoned building and make it look more pleasing.
Okay, because I know down the other end, one of the buildings down there was painted, so I'm just curious.
That was a long time ago, before the Historic Preservation Commission even existed. The silver one? The silver building?
The one across from John Stanley's got painted.
Oh, that John Stanley one, too.
Right. He don't own it. Kerry Pete owned it.
That was painted before he painted it, though. He just painted over the old paint. But I'm not sure when that was originally painted. But no, we are not allowing anyone else to paint sandstone buildings. That's, and that's.
I know the one brick building up the street was painted.
Because, I can't read this.
The one, the one brick building up the street was painted.
That's not a specific historic building. It's not a.
It's brick, right?
Contributing building. But she did paint it to depict the history of the building. Because it is where Upper Town meets Lower Town, that's where she got that idea from.
Okay.
It is, she did enhance the depiction of what the building actually is. It's the center, and in the past, it was considered the middle point between Upper Town and Lower Town.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Deborah.
You bet.
Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
Okay. The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met July 14th at noon. Present was myself as committee chair, Chris Hansen, Kathy Wren, Okoya Zimiga, Tom Nas, Allison Ritterbush. Absent was Dennis Fisher, Mary Smith, and Barry McNair. And the meeting was called to order at noon. We had a discussion regarding changing the age range for youth admission, changing the youth age to three years to 13 years, which would allow the 14-year-olds to be considered as an adult and able to use the exercise areas, which currently they are not allowed to do. The committee was in agreement with this. Staffing issues, the front desk lost two employees with a third one out due to COVID. So we are short there. At this time, we are not considering closing a second day during the week. We have lost two lifeguards since last, prior to last Friday. We have five slide guards that had many callouts during this past week with one being gone with her mother out of state for a couple of weeks. We will try to keep the outdoor pool open as often as necessary, but only weekends may be feasible to be open. We will allow, let's see. When asked how many hours they allowed their lifeguards to work, they said that they allow 30-plus hours for our more dependable staff and less than that if we can't depend on them to show up. Review of monthly saves. One was a nosebleed and a couple of them were assisting a family when their children got into the deep end. There was also a bleeding issue concerning a swimmer's foot and couldn't get the bleeding to stop and an ambulance was called to assist. In other issues to bring forward, they're going to meet with, or maybe they already have met with Jeff and discuss colas for 2023. And in some of the following issues, they will be using the funds from their 2022 budget to see how much of this that they can get done. But advertising will remain the same as in the past. The front of the building is becoming an eyesore and an issue. And they were looking to Diamond M of Rapid City to address the flooring issue in the overlook area. They want to invest in new locker locks and a router to snake, a snake to clean the drains. Obtain estimates on replacement of the back northwest door as it is a security and a safety issue. And a few pieces of glass in the foyer need replacement. They're looking at pricing wall mount spinners to dry suits in the locker rooms and replacing the cage in the overlook area. And hopefully looking at a seal coat on both parking lots. Preschool swim lessons are looking at starting late August through early September per Kathy. And then per Allison, there was the swim team to start in October. Our next meeting will be August 11th, 2022, noon at the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs. And we adjourned at 12:32.
Any questions for Linda?
Yeah, Linda. By the front door when you first come in, the concrete there is torn up in a couple of spots. Is that under consideration also?
That was not mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Has anybody looked at the roof on that thing after a big hail's fall?
I have an update about a roof adjuster from South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. And they did have somebody from the EPDM company, the one who put the coating on, to come look at it too and authorize some repairs to that immediately to maintain the warranty.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Parks Recreation, Larry?
The meeting started at 2:10 PM. Present were Mayor Nelson, Alder Women, Farvell and Johnson, Kathy Wren, Bart Sieg, Billy Morrow, Barb Walters, Dwayne Stanley, Martin Meyer, and myself. There was no public comment. Cemetery update, mowing is ongoing. Rec update, now some of this rec update's already happened, so bear with me. Nature series through July the 30th. Anyone wanting to help with the program, contact Kathy. Summer programs were great and the instructors were outstanding. Great response to pickleball. Open gym is still ongoing. Baseball tournament is the eighth and ninth, so I believe it's over. The hydrant party at library had a good response. The parks update, bathroom at Centennial, Prichetaco were vandalized and tagged. Talked about the blowing up the toilet there. Mowing is regular, work is ongoing. And new business, there was a dying tree that was removed from Centennial Park. Another tree by the stage bench hill at Centennial was dug up and relocated to the area where the other tree was removed. The outdoor grass volleyball court at Butler Park has been tabled until a representative from Shrek can attend the meeting. Donations from Black Hills Credit Union for barbecue grill. Once the grill has been delivered, it will be installed by city workers at Brookside Shelter. Electrician to install handicap scooter charging station, Billy Bart will get three bits from electricians. Old business, Brookside Shelter roof is on. Parks and Rec Charter was explained to public and committee members. The mayor was present for that one. The lights at Butler Park are working. Public is thankful and grateful to the city workers for the work done to fix the problem. Centennial Park Water Fountain is up and running thanks to the city workers. The meeting ended at 2:45 PM. Next meeting will be August 3rd, Wednesday at 2:00 PM at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Larry? Follow up to a couple of comments Larry had made. He talked about a tree in Centennial Park that ended up getting moved. It was a small, beautiful tree just north of the bench hill. It happened to be right where the second suspended, or second bridge for the suspended sidewalk will land on that side of the river. So the city crews were able to get the tree spade from the state home and relocate the tree. It's not the ideal time of the year to be uprooting trees and replanning them. Right now, the tree doesn't look the best. The city crews are doing everything they can to make sure it's watered and give it a good chance to succeed and recover. So they're taking care of that. The fountain that Larry talked about is a fountain that came from the West Oak Building and it's been very near and dear to Craig's heart. He was behind the efforts to get it in the fountain. And for a while, it was really pretty. It was working well. This morning, the city crews, when they were out doing their inspections of the park, they found out that the pump in the fountain has died. So Brett wasn't able to get a picture of it today, but the crews are aware of it and they'll get it going as soon as they can.
It's a brand-new pump.
Thank you, Larry.
Yes, sir.
Planning and zoning, Deborah?
Planning and zoning meets this Wednesday at 7:00 PM on the 20th at City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Public Safety met Thursday, July 14th, 2:00 PM here at the Mueller Center. Present were myself, JR, Deb, the mayor, Jeff, Frank Maynard, Fall River Emergency Manager, Captain Phil Shively, and Fire Chief Darkoy. Members of the public present, Robert Miller and Joe Allen. Bob Miller was resident at Brookside. He brought us some concerns over traffic and speeding in the area of South River in Albany. He provided some suggestions and will be reviewing some potential traffic control signs and efforts in that area. Joe Allen was present to discuss kids playing at the water fill station area. He asked if the city could put up a basketball hoop on the north side of the parking area. There's some investigation that we need to do regarding that request. Update from the Police Department. Captain Shively reported that we've got a promising application for a patrol officer and we may receive a couple more. I can't see if he's nodding his head, whether that's...
It's an iffy thing.
Iffy thing, okay. We have one and may have a second application for the chief's position. In June, the department responded to 666 calls, 55 of which were high-risk calls. And on July 4th, one citation was written. A number of warnings were issued. The good thing about the warnings is there were no repeat warnings issued. So people listened once they were issued a warning. Under old business, we're still working the house number project. Our next step is to work with the scouting organization to provide us with the data of which buildings do not have house numbers. We talked about the fuels reduction grant and Jeff will be submitting that grant application. We've been talking about some traffic control signs, some potential changes in the Hotbrook and Coldbrook area, and we've decided that no change, sign changes are appropriate. A few weeks ago, I made a statement about a concern about RVs in mobile home parks. For some people, that stirred up a real concern. I've reviewed those ordinances more carefully and there's nothing in our ordinances that prevent RVs from parking in mobile home parks. So that issue is off the table. It's not a concern. Under new business, a business proprietor had contacted me and requested a loading zone between a couple businesses on North River Street. The committee talked about that and given the limited parking that's on North River and the fact that it will be changing, we don't believe we should be establishing fixed permanent loading zones. And as long as traffic is not being blocked, we believe that parking, empty parking spaces can be used for temporary loading and unloading. And if temporary markings can be utilized for that to notify existing traffic, there should be no issues. We've been talking for some time about the need for National Incident Management System, Incident Command System 402 training for elected officials. This is important because if we ever have a major incident in which some of us may have to be involved in some way and there's reimbursable expenses from FEMA, it's necessary that we have the training. And so we will be looking at having, scheduling that training either the second or the fourth Thursday in October, probably from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. So that will be probably six hours of some of the greatest fun you can ever imagine. So for those of you that have jobs, if you can, we'll get that date nailed down and if you can be there, that would be a very good thing. But it's, it'll be fun, trust me. We were contacted with a concern about the feral cat problem. And yes, there is a feral cat problem. We've asked Jeff to work with Battle Mountain Humane Society and put together an article for the paper on what individual residents can do to help manage the feral cat problem. I've been contacted by an owner of a mobile home park that is trying to get rid of a couple of abandoned trailers. And we've, whether or not the city can help with that process, and it's a very, it's a very defined process and I'm not sure there's anything the city can do to expedite the process, but it's been a learning opportunity for me just to find out the specifics about that. And so I've been in communication with that individual. We talked about the state radio P-25 upgrade. I'm sure you're all excited about that. All of the portable radios and mobile radios we have in the Police Department are P-25 capable, but they are not P-25 available. The base at the PD, base radio is not P-25 capable, but that's not an issue. We don't need it to be. If for some reason we do have to make the radios P-25 available, and what that does, it allows, and I'm going to oversimplify this, it allows everybody to talk to everybody. It's kind of a post-9/11 thing that the feds are working on. But it could be a $50 per radio budget hit along with whatever it costs a technician, travel time down from Rapids. So it's not an immediate issue, but going forward, it's something we might have to look at. We talked about whether or not there was anything the Public Safety Committee needed to do regarding cannabis dispensary application review, and we don't believe there's anything our committee has to do. Chief Coy with the Fire Department was there. He had a request regarding the locked road closed signs on Boardwalk Drive. And we're going to take a look at that.
Friday at 10:00 is that meeting?
Friday at 10:00, okay, great. And then he also offered to provide the PD with some training on emergency ventilation. Oftentimes, the police officers are the first on the scene of a structured fire and ventilation on a structured fire can often be a hindrance as opposed to a help if it's not done properly. And so he's offered to provide the training so the officers don't do something they shouldn't do. Meeting adjourned at 3:40 PM and our next meeting will be Thursday, August 4th at 2:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
JR, do you have anything you want to add?
He covered it.
Counsel, do you have any questions for either of them? Couple things. The chief position that Bill talked about, still only have one application for the police chief. The NIMS training bill that you talked about, am I correct that that training is for all elected officials and our city administrator and our finance officer?
Yes. We would not want to leave them out.
I've been to it.
You're so smart.
I've been to my desk training.
Refresh your course.
I've gotten FEMA money, so I must be good.
Thank you. Public Works, Craig?
Public Works start at 1:00. There's Lisa Cruzy, myself, Bob Nelson, Jeff, Deborah Johnston, Tracy, and Billy present. Talked about the parking on Jennings, the mayor did, because we had a couple people there concerned about it. Because the sidewalk is remembering 15-foot wide. Am I correct? 15-foot? And they're all concerned, so we talked about putting planners, big planners out there that won't be moved. And maybe decorative trees of some kind that's not really tall or into, whatever they want to plant, I guess, or whatever the state okay's them to plant. New business, fire hydrant pressure dead to terrace. We need to replace a four-inch pipe on lookout to six-inch. The tree in the Alde Catholic Church will come out later this fall. Move the pole lights and the truck bypass. Says it's new business, but it's old business. I apologize for that. And it's going from the north end up there by where the street shop is to the south end. Maintenance, the... Maintenance, the trimming in the alleys will continue this fall. Valley View Drainage, they're going to start it in about eight weeks, I figure. They're going to Albany Avenue this week to the top to start working on that water break situation that we had over there summer. I guess still summer, maybe spring sometime. Road projects, they're plugging along. They've got most of the concrete board coming to Big Vats. It's a really rough going out of town, so if you have a low car, you might not want to drive that way. Wastewater Treatment Plant, they got one person to do both of our projects down there. They haven't started yet and there's no date available as of the meeting. Code enforcement, I see our food truck park has three food trucks in there, well, two trailers and a truck. So it's doing good this summer. Code enforcement, we really didn't talk much about that. Asked about the letters and I did not write it down because of, you know, same thing. Sorry. Old business, Boardwalk Hill, I just talked about that. City water rebates. It's on old business. We did some...
We closed that one.
We closed that one. You didn't tell me. That one's closed. Battle Mountain Road, they started on that, the Millings. Had to reheat the Millings to put it down to make it stick. Leasing royalty agreements. I called the head man in Rapid City about it. Got an answering machine and told him to give the mayor or myself a call. Haven't heard anything from him and I don't know if the mayor has. The snow removal, it's just something Jeff has to rewrite in one of our ordinances. So he'll be working on that. Summit Road, we have the signs, but they're not up yet. Am I correct, Jeff? The clubhouse is on hold, the wall on the clubhouse is on hold. North River cleanup, it looks like they're plugging away on it. Our next meeting is July 26th, 1:00 right here at Mueller Center. Everybody is welcome.
Any questions for Craig? Thank you, Craig.
Anytime, Bob.
Jeff, bring us home.
Take you home, huh? Okay, let's go. Golf course report. Let me get back to the top here. Sorry about that. So the golf course advisory board or committee, excuse me, we're going to change that terminology as well, Mr. Lukens. Committee met on 11 July. The discussion was the clubhouse foundation repair. The committee understands the issues regarding funding and the practicalities, but they still continue to share. They understand waiting, but they are sharing their concerns regarding building stability. So we are looking at that. The golf course manager has the new golf course brochure out last week. The new point of sale system is up and running. We seem to have all the bugs worked out, but I say that with knocking on wood because it never works out that way. According to that, or PJ's system, where, Misty can correct me, but right now our revenues appear to be 11% higher than last year. I don't have the exact numbers and we'll correct that in a minute. Point was made that we're running out of golf courts often because of the play, so we are reviewing that in our 23 budget submission. Right now, focusing on summer maintenance. Plan projects include the bunker on number eight, greenside bunkers on number one, and this fairway bunker on number one, which will be removed. And then our bathrooms, we are repairing now. Upcoming tournaments, couples tournament and the club tournament. Some of these are hard to pass, I guess. The two and three-man scrambles went well and the Don Gannon Tournament produced $2,300 back to the golf course as a donation for improvements. Next meeting, October, excuse me, October, we're going to hold off for a while. Next meeting, August 8th, the clubhouse at the golf course at 6:00 p.m. $1,800 for the rest of us. On the city administrator's side, both Bob has taken all my glory because my first comment was that Centennial Park Fountain was now operational. As of this morning, it is not operational. However, when it is operational, it looks beautiful. We'll get that back. The other thing was, two things, we've got the, we're preparing to mount the no overnight parking signs on South River, which is along the riverbank, along the riverside, near the Brookside Apartments. So that will be no overnight parking in that area. And then in addition to that, the no RV parking signs will be installed up on the parking lots, both to the north and south of the depot, of the Chamber of Commerce depot. Those should be in this week. That's all I've got on my end. Bob, you can take it home.
I had a comment to make on the golf course. I had a camper from Omaha that brought his, drug his golf cart all the way up here from Omaha and he thought your course out there was very beautiful.
Thank you, nice to hear. I'll pass it. It is always beautiful. Of course, it hasn't stopped raining yet. Once it stops raining, it'll be different. No, thank you.
He thought it was great.
I'll pass it on to the crew, thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sure.
Misty?
My whole world is budgets right now, so I have a very big report for you. I'm super excited to hear that China Buffet is looking to get some plans, so I'm going to get on Scott when I get to work tomorrow morning and make sure that he puts that high on his priority list.
Oh, boy.
We've certainly missed them. We were expecting a claims adjuster to come this morning to inspect the building, the list of buildings that had damage from the hailstorm. Because of the temperature today, when I hadn't seen them by two and I called, they said they decided not to come today and get on roofs, that they're coming tomorrow. So hopefully, they, we've already had a claims adjuster out to look at all the vehicles and we're getting somewhere on the building. Hail here, the county had claims, they had in the northern hills, some significant damage. And so the claims adjusters are spread pretty thin. It's taking them a while to get to it, but they are working on it and we have listings for them. We got the hay values from the extension office for the airport hang, which has been completed. So we're anticipating the revenue of our 42% on the hay bid that you approved will be coming in within a week or so on that. There were 211 or 12 bales in total, which was one or two less than last year, so very similar. We have been working on the plat for the Fresno Catholican 17-foot being vacated. I'm waiting for an updated plat from Anderson that just has some hatch marks on the existing northern lots, the northern part of the lots, similar to what you approved. Once we get that plat, I'll be contacting the seven different property owners to obtain signatures on it. And I've worked with Garland on the recommended language to prepare deeds for all of those seven as well. We've been contacted by two different companies that have identified or notified us that they received the registration certification from the state of South Dakota for cannabis dispensary licenses in our community. That is now at the stage that's working with the development coordinator to get the use permits, which aren't use permitted on reviews, just use permits for those types of dispensaries. So that is coming. I should have budgets prepared to be picked up by council on Friday. I won't be here on Friday, but I'll have them by the end of the day on Thursday, printed out for you to pick up on Friday and review over the weekends before budget hearings on Tuesday of next week. We talked about the grant compliance and submittals a little bit in the claims, so I was going to talk a little bit about that process and how it works. We have a number of grants right now, between the CDBG grant and the airport grant. And we have to pay those first, then we submit packets and then we can get reimbursement. So you'll be seeing a number of those coming up as you approve these claims and we pay for them. The elected officials workshop that we had two members that were going to attend, we talked in our admin finance meeting about how the SDML was going to be recording that and for $50, we could buy the recording. So they're anticipating that to come out sometime in the middle of next week and I'll be forwarding it to all of you and I'm kind of excited to be able to see it in that way. As soon as I have it, you'll get it and I encourage you to, when you have some time, take a listen. We are moving closer to hiring someone for our open admin assistant position at City Hall. We've done some interviews and I'm scheduling a second interview so that Jeff can be present. He was super helpful in two of them that I had, so I was thankful for that and he missed one, so I'm scheduling a second interview for that and hope to have a new hire in front of you soon. That's all I've got right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Misty?
I got, I got three roofs put on my place today. People up there on my roofs.
They were up there, huh?
Is the library one of the buildings?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Misty, will the budget spreadsheets be available electronically?
I will email the Excel versions to you as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I'm going to be a little long-winded tonight. First, I want to thank Shelley and Sheri with Keepout Springs Beautiful, Scott with Complete Concrete and Rip and Rich with the South Dakota Department Transportation for sponsoring an appreciation luncheon for all the Highway 385 reconstruction crews and the city staff in Centennial Park last Wednesday. There have been bumps in the road, literally and figuratively, but the reconstruction is progressing. Thank you again to Shelley, Sheri, Scott, Rip and Rich for personally recognizing the hard work of all the construction workers. I also want to recognize the hard work of the dedicated folks that are working to remove the pampas grass in Fall River adjacent to the American Legion. These folks were in the water from early morning to around noon on Wednesday and Thursday. It's not easy work, but they're making progress. If anyone is interested in helping with the removal of the pampas grass and possibly some cattails, please contact Rajneel Lerman or Eric Boyd. They'll be able to find a spot in the river that you can call your own. Next, I want to talk about last week's article in the Herald-Star, quote, "Police Officer Shortage Persists With Resignation of Recent Law Enforcement Training Graduate," end quote. As is often the case with any discussion or decision, there can be unintended consequences. I believe that happened in this case. During the July 5 council meeting, two discussions quickly zeroed in on the chief of police. The right of the taxpayers to know how the city of Hot Springs is managing their tax dollars and the obligation of the city to not publicly discuss employees in an open forum is a delicate balance. The employees' rights must always come first. Our city has a small workforce and because of that, even though we don't mention an employee by name, the topic will quickly identify who we're talking about. Prior to the agenda item about mileage costs for the police chief, during communications from the public, a concern was raised about hiring untrained and uncertified officers. That's a fair question to be asked by the public. In that question, blame was also placed on the current chief. Later in the agenda, the council spent about 25 minutes doing their due diligence discussing the motion to approve mileage costs if the chief were to continue in a part-time role as chief of police. In my opinion, those two separate but related discussions and the newspaper article led to the unintended consequences I mentioned earlier. As I listened to those two discussions, they seemed to take on a life of their own and someone to blame or a reason, take on a life of their own to find someone to blame or a reason not to support the travel mileage. Because of the language in the newspaper article, I've been asked if there was an agreement or collusion between the chief of police and patrol officer to avoid signing the contract. I can assure the public, there was no agreement regarding not signing that contract. What are the unintended consequences, I mentioned earlier, of the July 5 council discussions regarding a pay raise and mileage reimbursement for the chief? The chief will not continue after her resignation in a part-time role as Hot Springs Chief of Police. You approved her resignation on August 12th in the personnel actions. I can't say or blame her. Why would she stay where she's not wanted or supported? Since January 1, 2022, the chief has worked 587 hours of overtime to serve Hot Springs. Many of those hours were to provide coverage for the captain while he was on night duty. The captain has worked 700 or 376 hours of overtime in the same period. These two individuals have identified changes they believe will get our police department back on track and have been working towards those goals. I suspect many of their plans will now be put on hold because of short staffing. Not only will long-range plans be put on hold, the city will now place a larger burden on the remaining officers to provide police coverage for our residents. I'm also concerned safety issues and employee burnout will likely increase. A mentally and physically exhausted employee isn't what the taxpayers deserve. I want to personally thank Chief Winscott for her service to the city of Hot Springs and wish her and her family the best as they transition to their new home. I regret your employment ended with the city the way it did. You deserved better. Now let's get back to the first public question about ensuring the training contract is signed. On July 6th, I sent an email to the chief of police, the police captain, the city administrator, the city finance officer and all council members identifying steps we will take to address the South Dakota Basic Officer Certification Policy. Step number one, as part of the interview process of uncertified candidates, the police chief and captain will clearly discuss the South Dakota Basic Officer Certification Policy with each candidate. The candidates will acknowledge their hire is dependent on their signing the policy. Step number two, finance will ensure this policy is a part of the necessary new employee paperwork packet for new hire uncertified police officers. And step number three, any personal action for council consideration for new hire uncertified police officers will include the language, "This hire is contingent on the officer's signing the South Dakota Basic Officer Certification Policy." I believe if everyone involved in the hiring of uncertified police officers follows these steps, we won't have a future discussion about the reimbursement policy. And finally, I want to talk about the elephant in the room I mentioned during the July 5 council meeting, countywide law enforcement. Going back as far as 15 years, there have always been vocal supporters of countywide law enforcement. I'm not one of those folks. I've always believed the first priorities of the city are to provide police protection, fire protection and safe streets and infrastructure. The only easy one for us, the only easy one of those for us is supporting our volunteer firefighters. I already know how the vocal community, I already know how the vocal countywide law enforcement folks feel, but I don't know how the rest of Hot Springs voters feel. My request to the rest of you folks, that for whatever reason, don't voice your opinion publicly, are fine with how the city runs, let City Hall or your ward representative know where you stand on countywide law enforcement. The county will have our budget meetings on July 26th and 28th. As it is every year, the police budget will be a very spirited discussion. Your opinion will go a long way to help the council make an informed decision. You have any questions for me? I think our next item is motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, we go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2-1, performance of public officials.
Executive, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes for Jeff, Misty and Garland. We've had a short evening. I don't think you need to stay. I'll make a point of noting when we come out of executive session. I don't know how long it will be. So with that, we'll need to take a pause before we go into executive session, but I'll join you there and we'll reconvene once we're done. All right, everyone's back. We're back in session at 9:30. Help me remember to tell Misty it's 9:30. So with that, need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hot mic.